Ed Miyoshi.
If everyone would join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, as we know, this is a special planning board meeting on off-cycle from our normal meetings. Our next two meeting days are November 19th and December 17th. And Pam, it's all right, I'm going to hold the approval of the minutes over to the 19th. So our first item on our agenda tonight is Montage, proposed 122-lot subdivision at the intersection of 52 and 216.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Dominic Crisco from Drake Loeb. On behalf of Charbel Development, it's nice to see you all again. And I'm here with Mark Canuli and Mark Day as well. And we've been working with the Board's consultants to finalize the finding statement. The last time we were before you, we were, I think, very close, but there was some desire to tweak the language. And just to point out that there haven't been no project changes in the interim, like we're not, we haven't been tweaking any of the details about the project, it's really just to get to a point where the finding statement itself adequately represents and fully represents all of the details regarding environmental impacts and mitigation measures for the project.
Michelle, do you want to kick us off as far as take us through? I know there have been some changes to the document since the last time the Board reviewed it. You've shared a couple rounds, I think, of drafts with us, but just if you want to walk us through the most recent changes and anything else you think we need to call out. And then I would just ask Board members if you have comments or additional edits or suggestions, let's just, as Michelle walks us through the document, let's go ahead and call those out.
I think the majority of the comments or majority of the changes that we recently texted as we made had to do with the water and the sewer. And just clarifying that it's going to be, the project is now centralized water and sewer with a connection from the projects to the Four Corners site. So that language was just clarified, and there had been several discussions and iterations. We talked about the long history of the project in the document, and we just wanted to make sure that that was clear, that that is now the preferred alternative and really the only option at this point. And then another change is that there was reference to a study that the applicant did of a number of the subdivisions in town to show what is, what the school, number of school children that's being generated typically in a subdivision in town, and they included that information in a table in the finding statement.
On that point, I had a question. Are we just jumping in this? As I understand, you know, the new study and that, but by departing from the Rutgers thing, does this, you know, we're all, Tommy, you're always talking about setting precedent. Does this change the precedent, then?
No, Rutgers is the standard, but if you have data that would prove otherwise, you can use that. It's just like the DEC has a standard rate of sewage disposal needs for a single-family own. And we all know that that number is on the high side, so if you can show you have a history of lower usage, then you can use the low usage, so it's perfectly acceptable.
Okay, thank you.
Unless you disagree.
No, I don't. And I mean, we included the Rutgers information as well as in there.
Right, just.
Another change was that in a couple places.
Michelle, just as you go, if you don't mind, just give us the paragraph or page referenced, so if we're referring to something specific, we can follow.
The, I'm talking about page 10 right now, there was changes having to do with, there were, anywhere there was a discussion of a groundwater well, it was changed, I mean, a bedrock well, it was changed to a gravel well, just so you know. On page 13, you'll see some minor changes in the paragraph, which is under mitigation findings, F2. And this just discusses how Montage and Summit Woods will run a single water main to the Four Corners site. And that's, that change occurred several times throughout the document because it was in a number of different places.
I had a question, I think, is about the agricultural exemption. That is lifted at what point in the process?
Well, first of all, that'll be a process of state law, and the tax receiver and the county commissioner of finance are involved in that.
Right.
And I don't know what the use of the property is now, it appears to still be farming.
Right.
So the exemption's there, but if the property is converted from farmland to other uses in less than five years, then there's a rollback formula that automatically happens through the tax office.
Okay. And that, the commence date is?
See, what happens is if you benefited from an agricultural exemption and you terminate that exemption, you have to wait five years before you can put the property to other use. If you don't, then there's a rollback that's calculated.
Including penalties.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
So I don't know whether it's already not, but I believe it still is.
I believe the agricultural exemption is still applies.
Yeah.
You know, I have no reason to believe that it's not.
And the rollback command is based on the actual taxes that would have been levied during that time period.
Okay.
An example's used here, but it's the actual taxes that were paid.
And there's five years of clawback of taxes at that point, you know, it's basically it's a penalty of taking it out.
And will the agricultural exemption stay with the 44 acres? Is that really going to continue to be a farm?
They're going to, the seller will retain that portion, but I can't speak to whether they're.
We don't know.
I realize it's not part of it, I just figured, you know, it's kind of the larger picture, that's all.
Sure.
Sorry, I keep interrupting.
Just want to finish yours, and then I can go, or?
Yeah, yeah. I think that's pretty much, I think those were all of the most recent ones we've talked about.
And there was a significant effort to, you know, make the document consistent and clear throughout, you know, given the fact that, you know, there's a long history on the project and a number of different alternatives, not only in terms of the project itself, but also like the utility. So at this point, you know, we really tried and worked closely with the Board's consultants to make sure that anyone reading this document without having the history would actually be able to follow through and be clear.
It's definitely improved from first reads.
I'll go on some things while she's looking through. So on page 11 of my document, I think there was an update of one that maybe have come through like today, but under surface water, um, page?
Page 12 now, on top, top paragraph.
It talks about wastewater treatment plant located in the Hopewell hamlet, that should be Four Corners. Right?
Yes.
And then on that same, that same page, there's a discussion on the floodplain, and maybe, maybe Michelle and Scott can weigh in. I think Rick, Rick Witt, you know, was satisfied, I guess there was some, you know, back and forth, you know, FEMA on that, and I think we had, you know, resolved whatever the discrepancy was.
I think it was a matter of some updated maps.
Right, so I think, I'm pretty sure that all that was done. And then I think that was it for us, all our, all our other comments were addressed. The one thing, the, one thing, though, is I was also looking through Summit, Summit Woods. So there's, you know, in both of these, there's a discussion as far as the water main and in, I forget whether it's in Summit or Montage, but if Montage went first in terms of water, it seemed like you guys were going to run a water main separately up to 16, and then when Summit Woods comes in, they would also run a main up to 16, and they would join up? Is that what we're, we're looking to do? Because that's, I don't think it's in Montage, but there was some figures in the Summit Woods document, sorry, that say that, that if, you know, Montage, Montage goes first instead of coming through the Summit site and going up 216, that you would go 216 the other way? I don't know if you'd follow what I'm?
Do I need to say who I am again? For the record, Mark Canuli, Charbel Duchess Incorporated. Mr. Sotero, what I understand our document says, and I won't speak for the applicant, and Mr. Pryne is here to confirm, the idea was to run, in that scenario with water, the two options is, one, for us to go out to the intersection of 216, at the intersection of 216 and 52 up to where our neighbor would then connect into the main. If, in fact, we were to go first, they could route from that property, and I can't think of the, that other side of 216 that runs to where they connect at Phillips.
So.
So there'd be, there'd be a little redundant line there for main, water main, but the two systems are proposed to be connected.
There'd be a loop, basically. So.
It was requested that we connect both systems through the road that connects.
Okay, that, that's fine. So the other reason for me bringing it up, because in both the documents, and especially in yours from Montage, it says running a single water main, so is that, if they end up doing this as like a loop? Yeah, I'm sorry.
Oh, it's be single at the point that they converge at.
So as long as, as long as.
Old 52.
Okay, so as long as, as long as we understand that, that, okay. Okay, so, you know, the wording, okay, so as far as, you know, the wording that says it's going to be a single main, that's still, that's still okay?
And touching on Pete's point, I mean, you know, when I was reading this, the thing that keeps coming back is, you know, what happens if one of the two developments hits an unexpected snag? I assume that there's, you guys have full easements and the ability to just go by yourselves?
Correct.
If the other one never materializes.
Correct. And that's part of the documents we have, is there?
The developer's agreement.
The developer's agreement between the two of them for those items which are required one for the other.
That's correct.
And Tom, we've had a chance to review that agreement, so we're comfortable that it covered, we, we've had a chance to review the agreement, so we know that it covers all of the overlap here where there's a dependency.
Correct, the access, the water, sewers, all that.
There was one on the CD, but I wasn't sure it was the latest, but, okay, but.
But we have.
Okay, thank you.
Pete, anything else from?
No, I'm good.
Dave, do you want to talk about traffic a little bit?
Haven't reviewed it, and reviewed the wording of the document, we're satisfied that it covers every eventuality, particularly where it comes, when it comes down to the permits and acquisition of permits. We do request that it don't be kept abreast of any discussions either with, well, with the DOT and any scheduled meetings, that we may have the ability to attend these meetings.
Yeah, we've committed to do that, that's correct.
And then the, given that there is now a developer's agreement between the two as far as roadways and any mitigation offsite is concerned, I'm assuming that that document will cover that in totality.
Okay, is this the right time to talk about the bridges and revising that area of the document?
I was going to make comment, you mean about the fund?
Sure.
Yeah. So as the Board will recall, we've gone back and forth with the bridges, and we've ended up with these suggestion and proposal that the, they're really crossings of wetlands so that the understructure, you can guys help me out with the terminology, is really not a bridge in a traditional sense, it's more of a structure to facilitate the wetlands and, and the wildlife, et cetera. So therefore, they will be dedicated to a stormwater district that will be formed to include this subdivision. So therefore, any future costs of replacement, repair, et cetera, of that structure will be part of the stormwater district expense. The actual road surface traversing them is, will be considered a general town highway expense, just like in any other subdivision in the town. What the developer's proposing as an inducement to, you know, resolve that issue, and what they had proposed, is they'll make an initial contribution at some point before it's turned over to the town of $122,000, which will go into a capital reserve fund in that district so that if a repair or replacement has to be done sooner than anticipated, there will be some funds available for those, that cost. So with that, we've kind of resolved the issue, we don't have to worry about the county accepting the bridge of town, it resolves it, and since they only benefit the particular subdivision, it's, I think, a fair solution in the problem.
And in that agreement, those subsequent, the district, the water, or would be?
Stormwater district.
Stormwater district would be, those would be collected as a matter of taxes, right?
Correct.
Not as a homeowners association?
Correct, correct.
That's correct, it would show up on your tax bill.
Because one proposal had been to have the HOA take care of it, we were a little, you know, leery with that because we don't have the best success with HOAs, so.
Right, I was going to say, one of those, you can go to jail for not paying, and one can't, so.
There's no debt, nobody's going to go to jail after Jaguar first, but that's another subject.
So, Tom, I'm sorry, let me just make sure I'm understanding exactly, are we saying we're forming, the town is forming a new stormwater district?
Yes.
Just for Montage?
Maybe, yes, maybe what we should do is just take a step, with the finding statement, what it does really is just summarizes all of the environmental impacts that you've identified, all of the situations that you feel needed to be addressed, then there's a discussion of what has come, what you've done to look at it, and a finding as to what you feel that there is no mitigation, or there is no impact, or if there is, what the mitigation's going to be. If, once this is adopted, the next phase will be, they'll come in for a formal subdivision approval, and you'll go through the regular subdivision process, and all the other agency approvals. So in the end, you'll be issuing a preliminary approval of the subdivision that will have conditions that they have to petition the town board to establish a stormwater district. There'll be a sewer district, which we have to figure out, a water district, I can't think of any other districts, but those, those districts will allow this, these 122 homes to function and to bear the cost of things that are benefiting only those homeowners. So that will be part of your preliminary approval conditions, and then if the town board agrees to form them, it will come back to you for your final approval, along with, you know, DOT, DOH, and all the others.
I agree.
Sorry, go ahead. So we would create a new, a new sewer and water district, even though they're tapping into an existing?
Yes, because there's different, so, they will be, they will connect into the Four Corners district, and when I say "they," it's going to initially be the 122 homes here, and then eventually the Summit Woods, or vice versa. And so they have to pay the cost of operating the system within their subdivision, and if there's a pump and station or anything there, they'll pay that electric because that's only benefiting those homes. Then it'll discharge into the mains and the road, and then it will come into Four Corners, and then that district, the people who are creating that waste, will then have to contribute to Four Corners for the cost of treating it. So we usually create separate districts because it's easier to keep the accounting straight.
But this district would pay and contribute towards the O and M for Four Corners as well?
So the benefit to the Four Corners district is that the increased flow, they'll bear the cost of any changes that have to be made to the water or sewer system, but now there'll be a greater tax base paying the carrying charges of the system, which theoretically should drive some of the cost down.
John, does that make sense, or do you have other questions?
No, I think, I think that explains it pretty well.
I don't know, but I don't know what that side wants.
Michelle, was there anything else you were going to come back to?
Nope, I think we covered it, I was just checking.
There was just, all right, there's one thing I just want to point out, we anticipate it's going to be a gravel well that's going to be drilled, but until we do a little more, once this project moves forward.
Is this the well at Four Corners, or the?
At, at Four Corners. But before we actually go and drill a gravel well and develop a gravel well, there's like pilot tests that are done, preliminary testing that are done. So the intent is, and what we anticipate is that we're going to drill a gravel well, but for some particular reason, those pilot tests don't prove, you know, successful, then we may actually go back and drill a rock well, so.
Do we need to call that out in the findings, or is that something we're comfortable?
I'm just mentioning it because I don't know whether that might become an issue later or not.
Well, I think we maybe should just phrase it that we're going to drill a well, whether it's rock or gravel.
We anticipate gravel, but again, we're not at that point of.
I think it's fine, you know, I mean, this gets into an area that we often run into, you know, with seeker is, is that, you know, the seeker finding statement, you know, anticipates certain things.
Too detailed.
Right. I just wanted to mention it just so, there's no.
Is there a, is there a concern if it's one or the other, Scott, or an implication to?
No, no, we believe the gravel well would be the better bearing well, and it's easier to determine that it's going to bear, you know, it's a much simpler process to know that you're going to get good water out of it before you actually, you know, spend the money. Rock wells are a lot, you may have to drill three or four rock wells to actually get a good well, so. Preferred alternative is to go gravel, but until we actually get out there and start doing the testing, can't commit 100% to that.
And the cost of that well is borne by this applicant?
Yes.
So, you know, understanding that it could be one or the other, any concerns?
Well, it'd be shared by them.
We understand that we have to drill a well.
I had a question, it's a truly minor point, but the, the statement says that this, the subdivision diversifies, further diversifies the housing stock in town. In what way?
If you go back to the SEIS and then the FEIS, we explained the lot sizes, the cluster subdivision, the type of housing. And looked at what you had built in the last, let's say, 10, 15 years. It's not quite the same type of housing, so we said further diversifying your, your housing stock with a cluster subdivision, your housing.
So it's the lots, it's not the houses?
Lot size.
Because I was going to say, the houses look, they fit right in there, okay, thank you.
And we were using the cluster as a mitigation factor to deal with, you know, your disturbance of land.
Less disturbance, right.
Thank you, again, minor point.
Any other questions or comments from Board members?
No.
Tom, do you want to walk us through our next steps here?
Well, if you determine that the finding statement is a complete and adequate summary of your findings, and the solutions are, at the current time, generally acceptable to you, you could then adopt the finding statement. It's then circulated and published in accordance with the rules, and then the applicant will come back to you with the rendition of a subdivision map.
Okay, so is this something that we normally would do by motion of the Board?
Yes.
Or is this something we need a resolution, okay?
Well, you're moving to adopt the finding statement as provided to you by Michelle tonight, which we deem complete.
Any concerns with the Board? Any addition, I'm sorry, not concerns with the Board making a motion, any additional items that need to go into the document, any other adjustments to the document?
No, none that, we discussed a couple small edits, and I made note of them, so I will, will make sure that those are corrected in the final version.
Okay, are they semantical, or are they substantive?
No, they were just small edits, like changing from Hopewell Hamlet to Four Corners or supply, but no, no change to the intent of the documentary, no.
We don't have to read this loud, do we?
Yes, from page one to page 70.
To adopt it, although if you would like.
I was going to say, if so, can we send out for sandwiches?
Tomorrow night at 6:00. All right, does anyone on the Board have any final questions, or does someone want to offer a motion to adopt the Montage at East, sorry, Montage at East Fishkill Lead Agency Seeker Findings Statement?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Okay, thank you.
Thank you all very much, yep, have a good night. Thank you for taking the time.
See you next month.
Yeah, well, maybe not, well.
2030, 2030, we'll be here.
Well, God willing.
Not sure what time, but we'll be here.
Van Winkle.
Just, just so that the applicant knows, what we'll do is, as soon as you have the final copy with, final minor edit changes, just let me know, I'll come to, over to the Town Hall and I'll sign.
Great.
So you have your final copy.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right. The next item on our agenda is a review, I was going to say a review of fees, review of the FEIS, excuse me, for Summit Woods' proposed 175-lot subdivision located on Route 52 near the intersection of Primrose Lane, Southern Drive, Stormville Road, and Coller Bark Road.
Good evening.
Hi, Mark.
Mark, Dave, Stacosa.
Do you want to start with an overview, Mark, of the information you provided to us since the last time we had this before, so I know you've provided some supplemental?
Yes, we, we had taken the comments, and we had basically gone through and resubmitted for review. And I think a lot of them had to do with the offsite water and sewer, as discussed at the prior application.
You, you heard the discussion that we mentioned around the routing, that the piping will depend on which subdivision goes first between Montage and Summit. Are there any concerns on your applicant's part with the way that's laid out right now? Are you comfortable with the way it's laid out? And are we consistent, I guess, Michelle, I'll look to you, I want to make sure we're consistent between the two?
Yeah, I think, you know, jointly, we've talked about it between the two projects, and we feel that it is best way, you're going to have both ends of 216 converge, and then meet at one line going up to the Four Corners.
And the expectation, though, is that Montage will go first, right?
I actually don't know that.
I don't think we can say that.
That we don't know that?
I'm guessing, it's, I have nothing to pin it on.
Well, it's an 18-year project, so I'm not really going to flip a coin.
I'm not taking the over/under on it. I guess, Michelle or Mark, I'm not sure what you want the Board to review or discuss at this point, if we can just have maybe each of you, the professionals, kind of go through anything that you've seen, if there's any additional information we need, or anything that's missing at this point?
So in my previous memo, the last time they were here, I had a few, just a few comments. One was that I asked them just to sort of update the seeker language at the beginning, which discussed the process and what they'd been going through, because it had ended, and it didn't include the most recent correspondence and stuff that had happened since, I think it was like, I don't know, 2004, and now, I just wanted you to kind of describe the process they've gone through with the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service, and the Army Corps of Engineers having to go out and recertify and that kind of thing, just add additional details about stuff that had been going on since the project had been in front of you guys way back when, and, and are more recent, and they included that language in here. I asked them also to describe, there had been a couple changes to the site plan based on, I mean, sorry, the subdivision plan based on comments from agencies. For instance, there was a comment from OPRHP, which is the Historic Preservation Office, that they wanted them to move a lot, and that happened, I could trace it on a, on a map, but it wasn't sort of discussed, and I, because of the time that had gone by, I wanted them to include that sort of language, and so those are the kinds of things that they updated and, based on my comments. I asked them to add the traffic impact study and reference in here, and I believe it's all in here, I'll defer to Dave on that, and just any confirmation from DOT that they received and reviewed the traffic impact study, that's in there, and then just confirm that the, there's an agreement in place that allows the secondary access through Montage, and that in the event that Montage does not occur first, that Summit Woods, there's some agreement in place that allows them to put the traffic mitigation that would be required to reduce the potential for adverse impacts for traffic. that would be required to reduce the potential for adverse impacts for traffic on the Summit Woods project. So in other words, Summit Woods traffic study is contingent upon the Montage traffic mitigation going in.
Okay.
So there's, I'm assuming, and go ahead.
To that note, I noticed in the document now you've included an alternative analysis?
Yes.
Where you've assumed that Montage is not in place and whatever.
Correct.
I, I didn't get a separate document of that. Is it within this document? That alternate, alternative?
That, that all went in as part of that?
I'll look at it. I don't have time to look. I saw the summary and it looks, it looks reasonable in, as presented. I just haven't had a chance to look at the details of the analysis, so I would like-
If you don't have it, let me know, but I believe we submitted it as a package.
I'll look again, but I, I saw the main, the main traffic impact study from 2017. That's acceptable.
Okay.
And as, as Michelle said, we had asked for-
Alternative.
An alternative. In the, in the event that Montage doesn't go, what are your, you know, what's your standings? I saw the summary, but I didn't see the actual details. I'll look again and I'll-
Yeah, and I, we included that.
Okay.
That analysis.
And I'm sorry, Michelle, back on your point, I thought because Summit Woods had its two separate ingress and egress that it, in what ways is it dependent on Montage's traffic improvement at 216?
The improvements that Montage have proposed at 216 with the signalization, we just want to make sure that if Montage doesn't complete that work, that Summit Woods traffic does not require any, any additional mitigation.
Ah, okay.
That, that particular intersection.
You just, you just need to-
That's the main focus.
You need to confirm it, not that that work has to be undertaken.
No, no, we, I think which, from the town standpoint, it should be documented and, you know, on paper, assuming that, you know, if Montage doesn't go through, you've got a project that's going in without mitigation at 216 and you have no evidence that it's not required.
But you also don't have a four-way intersection there, you still have a three-way intersection there at that point.
That, that is true, but, you know.
Well, let me ask you.
Okay.
I mean, I knew that, that Montage intended to, I'm losing my throat, is to go through Summit Woods for the secondary access.
Right.
I didn't think the reverse was true, that you guys were going through Montage, come hell, right?
That's what we're saying.
That's true. We showed, we showed the, the Montage project exiting out.
Right.
There's easements or agreements, I should say, that are in place to allow that to happen.
Okay.
And that's actually shown in this plan.
So I'm sorry, so David, your point is you just need to document that the interdependence is not-
Right. If Montage were no trigger-
Essentially, Summit cars would not come out at an intersection if Montage hasn't built.
Right.
But they would come out onto 52 and some of them would go west and cross that 216 intersection or turn onto 216. So that increased volume of traffic may or may not rise to the level of requiring a signalized intersection.
Ah, okay, thank you. That was the subtle.
Thank you very much.
Sure.
There we go.
Are there plans on, on doing any, are there plans on doing anything to 52?
I was just trying to wave my hand around for you. I'm sorry.
Are there plans on doing anything to 52 alongside what's being done at 216? Because I, I don't know if you've ever been there when there's an issue on 84, but the traffic is pretty ugly there already, so I'm wondering if the road's gonna get widened or?
That was not proposed.
No, there's a, we had proposed originally a left turning lane. I don't know that it's gonna alleviate some of the issues you're talking about, but there is, there is a left turning lane into the Summit Woods site in their main entrance, which is their westerly entrance. So that is, in fact, always been really part of the plan. And that's based on conversations we had with the DOT back when Christ was a kid, it was a while ago.
But as far as adding, adding additional lanes and capacity to 52, that was not, that was not, except, well, you guys didn't have any intersection improvement.
It's already kind of ugly and if we're putting another 300 houses in there, it's not gonna get better.
So Dave, you have the traffic study? You see, you've read the summary, but we haven't looked at the detail yet, so.
For the alter, for the alternative analysis.
Okay.
The main traffic study, I have that separate and apart from the document. I've already reviewed that and I have been in contact with, what it was, it was then Rich Pearson.
Rich Pearson, yeah.
Okay.
I think Mark, Mark's, Mark's pretty much driving the bus.
Based on the volumes that we had, though, there was no anticipated improvements on 52 at this point to widen that road or anything other than the turning lane Mark's referenced, which would just be benefiting the people who are gonna live in that subdivision versus-
That, that was, that's, that's it.
Regular traffic pattern.
The turning lane and that was it, really.
Okay. Okay. Pete, you want to go through?
Yeah, we just, we just had a couple, you know, housekeeping type items. I'll, I'll send out a memo early next week, but just, just a couple small things where maybe some of the text should be in different, different sections. But the one thing I wanted to bring up and just make sure that we're, that we're clear on is, Mark, it says in here on page, page 12, it says under utility connections between Summit Woods and Montage, it says since the water supply will be provided from the Four Corners site under the preferred alternative for water supply, there's no need for a connection between the Summit Woods and Montage at East Fishkill Projects.
Correct.
I would think that we would want a loop, right, Scott?
Well, the loop wouldn't be through the two sites, it would be from each, like we've been talking about, it's coming up 216 and meeting.
Yeah, but we'd have, but if the two projects, if they, assuming that they both go, then if there was no interconnection, then we'd have two dead ends, right?
I mean, we have a connection.
What's the distance between the two dead ends? Can you tell me that?
No, actually, it, there's actually, there's a road that-
Mark, can you just turn that off?
Oh, sorry. There's a road that was anticipated to connect the two projects, so the loop in the main, when we're, you know, we could certainly do it. There was an interconnection between Montage and Summit Woods here on this side, so we could easily do it. I mean, we always anticipated the connection, obviously through, you know, years gone by, we always, we're gonna connect them as a regional system, so, I mean, it's, the water mains are gonna be right there, so.
Right, right, so, I mean, I think that we want a loop, we don't want, we don't want any, so, so again, that's just, that's just like a minor change.
Okay.
Like, I'll document that, but, I mean, other than that, any of our prior comments were addressed, but I'll, I'll send out a memo early next week with just a couple of the housekeeping items and mention that one. Let me just, let me just double check, I think there was, um, now again, it's just, you know, housekeeping items, some like reference, like the figures, you know, to clean up, but again, you know, it's minor stuff. As far as like content, all, you know, the content is there, so.
There's no additional documentation you're waiting on?
No.
Just some minor cosmetic stuff?
No.
Okay. Michelle?
Yeah, I think the only thing about the emergency access was just to make sure that there was an agreement that you would allow Montage to go through your property in the event that there's, that's in the developer's agreement.
Yep, and I can speak to that. That's okay. By the way, for the record, Andy Gilchrist, project attorney, that is part of the developer's agreement, so that would allow the emergency access to be constructed if Montage is built.
And again, the developer's agreement is on file within both application, applicant's files, so that anybody who wants to review it can say, well.
Everything's on, on website as well.
I had a question on that. I mean, we were issued the CDs. Is the website still like the master copy? How does that?
Yeah, they're supposed to, they're supposed to keep updating it as things go.
So, so where it's not like we can expect CDs or anything going forward, the website is, is it?
Well, this was submitted in September, so this is, this, and I'm pretty positive the last time we talked about this, it was, everything was up in September and so if they make any changes, any documents, if there's a finding statement that ultimately gets, that'll go up on the website as well.
Okay, and now is there like a notification process?
Yes.
I hate to sound lazy, but like a notice just saying, okay, there's a new finding statement or something like that, just go to the website.
Oh, for, for-
That would be helpful versus occasionally going out there and what's changed and, and all of that.
There's a notice of completion that has to go out once we-
No, I think he's saying that if something's posted to the website.
Oh, if you guys-
It's kind of keeping, I, I, just monitoring this as we go forward, you know?
Sure. I mean, if you guys would let us know if you post anything new to the website.
We'll text you. Get more notifications.
You don't answer calls.
Scott, anything from your end?
Nope, nothing to add. Where do we go next?
And Tom, anything we're waiting on? So then, Michelle, similar last project, or Tom, our next steps here now that we're, it seems like aside from a few cosmetic items, we're essentially-
Right, they'll make those changes, they'll submit it to you, have to accept the FEIS as complete. There's then a circulation notification process and in the meantime, the applicant's very qualified attorney will submit a draft of their finding statement, which we will then go through the process of working out the language to make it acceptable to the planning board.
And the, except as complete, is that something we need to draft? I know we don't have all the chain, the remaining editorial changes yet, but is that something that we usually draft a resolution for versus?
I'll do what they call a notice of completion.
Perfect.
And, and it actually has to get posted to an environmental notice bulletin and circulated to all the involved agencies as well.
So when that's ready, I'll be on the agenda for approval and adoption and then we'll go out.
Okay. Do you have other questions for, sorry?
I'm sorry. Projected timeframes or is that TBD?
Well, we're November 14th, I think your next meeting is November 19th, that's probably a touch aggressive. We're hoping for-
We also have December 17.
Yeah, we're hoping for acceptance of the-
Thank you.
On the 17th and then we can go through the notification process and start working on finding statement.
So the final revised finding statement, if we could, yeah, just get a, some kind of a notice that it's out on the website and we're good to go?
That'd be great.
Excellent.
Thank you.
You have no other questions for us?
We don't at this point.
You couldn't ask for more today, you better leave it go.
But I concur with the procedure reviewed earlier. Supplemental FEIS accepted, notified, there's a period of time that has to go by under the seeker regs, we'll work on a finding statement. Once that's adopted, on this project, the public hearing had been opened on the preliminary subdivision plat, technically still open, that should be renoticed and we'd like to go forward with the subdivision review process.